Meetings with other informational parts, just so people are aware of the proposal, sort of the nuts and bolts of it, what annexation really means, what the benefits are, what the costs are. I'm not here to advocate one way or the other, but I'm here to present some information that's factual and open up any questions if anybody has them as we go through it. So with that being said, I want to get started just laying out what annexation means. Really, it's nothing more than an invitation to join our district. Many folks in Mount Pleasant already assume that they're inside of Mids district because we've had a presence in Mount Pleasant since 1969. And in fact, we actually service more students and generate more credit hours in Mount Pleasant than we do in our main campus in Harrison. But in reality, Isabella County and Grasset County, the whole RESD territory is out district and as such, students pay out district rates. This invitation does apply only to the school districts of Elma, Ashley, Beale City, Breckenridge, Fulton, Ithaca, Mount Pleasant, Shepherd, and St. Louis. There are a couple of areas that within the territory that fall within Delta's district and a couple that fall within Montcom's district and residents are not allowed to sort of jump ship. So only those that are currently not in a district are eligible to vote on this issue. And while we certainly have really strong partnerships already with the Grasset Isabella RESD through a variety of programs, including dual enrollment and our career and technical education programs, this is not connected to them in any way. Sometimes people make the assumption that we're sort of either taking over the GIRESD or we are in partnership with them through this proposal, but they are separate. And regardless of whether it passes or not, the RESD will be, will not be impacted at all. I wanted to show a quick video if I can that details this far more eloquently than I can describe it. So I'll hit play here and we'll see if this works.
Annexation is a relatively simple concept, but to understand it, you first need to know about how community colleges in Michigan are organized. Each of Michigan's community colleges was chartered to serve a specific geographic area. Those areas can either be by county or counties or by intermediate school district or school districts. But not all areas in Michigan have an in-district community college. Mid-Michigan College became Michigan's 25th community college in 1965 when voters living in the Clare-Gladwin RESD passed a millage to support college operations. That means that residents living in this area support the college with 1.2232 mils levied on their property taxes. In exchange, these residents pay reduced tuition prices and comprise the college's board of trustees to provide governance and oversight for the college. For Mids, in-district tuition is 40% less than out-district tuition. In 2020, 2021, tuition rates are $132 per contact hour for in-district students and $220 contact hour for out-district students. According to the Community College Act of 1966, a community college's district can expand through annexation, thereby offering the benefits of reduced tuition and college governance seats to new geographic areas. So a community college's board of trustees can invite communities that aren't currently a part of any community college to join their district. Mids board of trustees have formally invited the Grasset Isabella RESD to join its service area. That requires that voters living in the GIRESD vote to accept annexation and the college's current millage rate of 1.2232 mils. If both ballot proposals pass, then residents in the GIRESD will join residents in the Clare-Gladwin RESD and become part of Mids in-district area. They will then receive the same benefits as the college's current in-district community members.
So that's a kind of annexation in a nutshell. As we go through this, I wanted to give a little bit more familiarity with those of you that aren't as familiar with Mids as others. And then of course, I'll go into benefits and costs and show you what the ballot language actually looks like and what you're going to see when you walk into the booth on November 3rd, or if you vote by mail earlier. As the video alluded to, we were founded in 1965 as the 25th community college. We have two campuses. Our main campus, of course, is in Harrison on 600 wooded acres, but we also have a large campus on the corner of Somerton and Broadway in Mount Pleasant that services more students and generates more credit hours. While our in-district rate services Clare, Harrison, Farwell, Beaverton, and Gladwin school districts, we actually have, as I alluded to, have been in Isabella and Grasset Counties almost since the beginning, since 1969, operating in basements and storefronts, eventually buying the Pickard building and then moving over to our current location. Our focus has always been on student learning, in particular rural student learning. It sometimes surprises folks to know that we actually have satellite campuses as far north as Newberry in the Upper Peninsula, as far south as St. John's in Clinton County, all the way over to the east in Caro and Bad Axe in the thumb, and all the way over to the west in Big Rapids. In fact, Mids services students from 72 out of the 82 counties in the state of Michigan. The other focus area for us is through community connections and partnerships. We really want to be and feel like we are a part of the community and want to continue that mission as well. This is just a real quick hitter on how community colleges in general are funded across the state and how Mids is funded. We do have the second lowest millage rate in the state, 1.2232 mils. For those that are curious, Jackson College is the only one lower than ours. And we are currently servicing over 1,100 students from the Grasset Isabella RESD area, including over 800 from Isabella County. So a third of our students come from those two counties alone. They make up two of our three most populous counties in terms of enrollment. On the right is what the state average is in terms of how community colleges are funded. The state had in their sort of dream ideal that it would be funded through one-third each of tuition, state aid, and property taxes. As in most things, state aid has continued to diminish and play a smaller role, which is typically picked up by student tuition and fees. However, Mids on the left is way out of whack. Right now tuition and fees makes almost two-thirds of our budget, which is, it's tough to be sustainable, given the ebbs and flows that enrollment brings. What does it mean? As the video alluded to, it's a, if both measures pass, it's a 40% reduction in tuition from the $220 contact hour for out-district students, which residents currently pay, down to 132, which is the in-district rate. This would generate $3.11 million in revenue for Mids. However, as this slide shows, right now of the 1,100 students that are attending this fall from the Grasset Isabella RESD area, if we were to swap out their out-district rate for their current in-district rate, those students would save $924,000 collectively this semester alone. So while Mids generates 3.11 million, we will return almost 2 million of that back to the students in the way of tuition reduction. We did have in prep for our annexation proposals, an economic impact study that was conducted by EMSI, the Economic Impact Modeling, Economic Modeling Impact, I guess I don't remember the exact, EMSI. And according to EMSI, Mids graduates have a return of investment on their education of 18.3%, which is far higher than the stock market or savings account. And graduates on average earn about 8,200 more than those with just a high school diploma. So there certainly are student benefits to annexation and moving to an in-district rate, but there are also community benefits. Our economic impact on the Mid-Michigan region is currently $69 million per year, and one out of every 43 jobs in the Mid-Michigan region is dependent on Mids either student support, operations, or et cetera. So we are really an economic driver in this area. In addition, over the last three years, we've graduated 450 healthcare professionals, which are working in area hospitals and health centers in the areas like nursing, medical assistant, radiography, and that's not even mentioning the non-credit programs of certified nurses aid and phlebotomy. Couple of programs where it intersects with annexation are Future for Frontliners and the Reconnect programs. Both of those are state programs. Future for Frontliners is getting more press right now, and this is essentially a scholarship program for those that have had to work on the front lines during the COVID situation. Those, if they do not have a degree currently, they can apply for the state to actually pay for their degree. And it's not that out-district residents, like residents in Mount Pleasant or anywhere in Isabella, Grasset Counties, can't qualify if they're out-district. It's that the state only reimburses up to the in-district rate, so they would have to pay the difference. Reconnect is a similar program, just for those that are 25 and older. It passed, but it's been shelved until budgetary situations are a little bit better at the state level. Currently, Mids has about 4,300 alumni live in the area. So with reduced tuition, we would certainly hope to see an enrollment bounce, which keeps even more graduates in the local pipeline for talent, for businesses, so on and so forth to pull from. Obviously, we have thousands of students that transfer to universities all over the country really, but a majority of them do transfer to CMU and stay in the area. As the video did allude to, certainly residents would be able to participate in our trustee elections. We have seven board members, all open elected. There's no specific representation by county. And per that same economic impact study I cited earlier, for every $1 spent in taxpayers' funds on Mid-Michigan College, they see a $5.50 return on investment. And if any of you happen to have $519 million sitting around and you'd like to buy a college, that is what our value was placed at through additional income of our graduates and societal savings on health and crime. So really, I couldn't set it better myself than the quote there. We really do provide a significant impact and generate a return for our major stakeholders, including students, taxpayers, and the society at large. But the big question I get is what is it going to cost? For every $1,000 in assessed home value, and of course, assessed value is about 50% of the fair market value, residents will pay $1.2232. In Isabella County, the median home price in 2020, the assessed home value, I should say, was 56,661, so it works out to approximately $69 a year, or $5.76 a month if you like to look at things that way. Grasset, it's a little less expensive. The home values are a little bit lower. It works out still to about $55 a year, or about $4.50 a month for that. If you look at it a different way, if a student were to attend Mids for just one year, at the difference between the out-district and in-district rate, they would save more money in just one year than what 30 years' worth of assessed taxes would cost the homeowner. So it is quite a return on an investment and one of the, one of the few times it benefits that we have a low mill rate. This is what the official ballot proposal will look like when you walk into the ballot booth in November. There's actually two proposals. Essentially, the first one asks, do you want to join the district? The second one asks, can we assess 1.2232 mils? Both have to pass in order for annexation to occur. If proposal one passes with flying colors and everybody says, yeah, I want to join the district, but everybody says, I don't want to support it with taxes, and proposal two does not pass, the whole thing doesn't pass. So it's sort of an all or nothing deal. But I just wanted to point that out because it looks different than what sort of your standard millage increase request it looks like that most of us are used to seeing on the ballot. So that's a little sneak peek of the identical wording that you're going to see. With that, I know I kind of went through this quickly. I want to be sensitive to your time. I've probably already gone over my allotment and I apologize for that. But if you do want more information, you can visit midmish.edu/annexation or you can email me at friendsofmidmish@gmail.com. I check that site every day, so I'm happy to respond to any questions that anybody would have that way, if you think of something on your way home that you couldn't ask tonight. So with that, I will open it up for questions if anybody has any.
Yeah, what has enrollment been there over the last three years? I know CMU's enrollment has declined.
Correct.
What's the enrollment like at Mids?
It's been declining. We're now at about just under 3,500 students. We peaked in 2011 with about 5,200. We're down to about 3,500. Typically, community college enrollment anyway has an inverse relationship with the state of the economy. If the economy is doing well and jobs are plentiful, our enrollment tends to drop. And then as the economy sort of turns, people want to retrain and so on and so forth, and decide they want to go back to school. So our enrollment has been declining, and this fall, we took an even larger hit due to COVID. We were down about 13%. Any other questions or anything from folks? If you do, you can certainly visit our website, likely to find them there, or you can email me directly at friendsofmidmish@gmail.com. Happy to answer it. But thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time tonight.
Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you.
All right, looking at our agenda here, we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll open up for public comment. What is our time limit? Three minutes? Is that correct?
Right.
Three minutes. And if you choose to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and I'll recognize anybody that would like to address public comment. You can raise your hand using the controls in your Zoom meeting at the lower right in the participant box. We'll give you a minute. Sometimes it's difficult to find where the raised hand is. If you don't see it, click on the participants box in the bottom of your screen. You should see yourself there. And at the bottom of that panel where the list of participants, you can click raise hand. Jim Horton.
Hey, can you hear me there?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good, good thing you can't see me because I think I just had some Nashville hot chicken that I have in honor of my daughter Grace once or twice every month because she lives down in Nashville, Tennessee. But anyway, just to quickly touch base with all of you. Hello, Brian, you're doing a wonderful job. I anticipate to see you there at least two years, if not four. But anyway, just real quick, I'm not going to take up much time because I wanted to jump in on the three-minute session, not on the five-minute session. But anyway, real quick on the county budget, $21 million, we passed it. Balanced it with about $300,000 out of the fund balance. As you guys well know, with any time you have to deal with budgets, it's just a cut and paste job as far as I'm concerned, putting together pieces of a puzzle. It's always movable. We did not take any money out of the Lincoln Tax Revolving Fund. There are some issues going on, especially with the state of Michigan with the Raffelli case. I don't know if you followed that or not, but that seems to be quite, quite the big issue with our county treasurer, who actually is actually suing the county board of commissioners, which I can't comment on. But, and there's also some federal litigation going on. Again, that's gone going, so we did not take anything out of the Lincoln Tax Revolving Fund. Also, another big issue, and this is first and foremost as far as the county's relationship probably with the township, is with the county jail. I think I tried to talk to most of all of you in regards to where the location is going to be. I don't think it's any great secret now. There shouldn't be any secret at all. It's going to be at the corner of Remus and Somerton Roads. So again, I have another meeting on this Friday at 8:30 in regards to the jail committee. Commissioner Tobin Hope and I are going to be kind of the steering aspect as far as the county commissioners go, trying to work with union township and also work with the community in regards to this. That's kind of been our charge from the county board, so we're going to work at that. Again, $21 million budget. A couple other things too, we're working on, and I'm chairman of the Finance and Administration Committee, and a couple things I'm trying to work on is A, how are we going to pay for the jail? That's going to be important. B, we have another debt, even though you may have heard from other people in our county, on the county board, or that there is no county debt. The county is in debt up to the tune of $16 million unfunded liability with MERS. So that is going to be an issue we're going to deal with. And last but not least, as I mentioned before, the Lincoln Tax Revolving Fund and the Raffelli case, I think the county could be on the hook for a little bit, anywhere from, you know, there's always at-risk dollars, and they can look back anywhere from five years up to multiple years beyond that. So we're kind of an unknown at that. So we're going to kind of try to adjust for that, and as we go forward, try to budget all that in. On the positives, as I stated before in public meetings, and I know Brian, you're going to be counting on your hand there because I'm going over three minutes, which is very rare for me. But we got the wind turbines to the north, and that's, and that is going to be some, probably some counting on income coming in. I think though, the county board, whomever the makeup is going to be in the future, two to four to six to eight to 10 years down the road, if not more, is going to have to make sure those funds are restricted to pay for the incoming debt or the ongoing debt of the county. So that's all I've got, gentlemen and ladies. And Jennifer, hello, nice to see you again. And that's all I've got. So thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jim. Say hi to Grace for me.
I will. She's down in Nashville, Brian. She's, she's an RN down there and very proud of her, and I'm sure you're proud of your daughter Lexi too. So good to see you.
Likewise. Thank you.
Jim, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely, Mr. Lanning.
Go ahead, Tim.
I'm not sure I got great connection, but when are you going to get the shovel in the ground?
The talk, Brian, is April or May of next year. It was originally tentatively planned for September of this year. Obviously, that is not going to happen. And my last understanding, I did not mention this also, my last understanding is going to be probably April or May. And if I did not say this, and I don't think I did, the planned right now, the budget presentation is a $40 million budget with a $29 million bill. So sorry, I left that very, very important factor blacked out. So, and Tim, if you can't hear me, I could just run down two houses and yell it in your ear too. So.
Did you hear my question?
Yes. Can you hear me? Did I answer that or not?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if Brian asked a question and you were answering his, or it sounded like the answer I would have expected for my question.
It's not going to happen this year.
Anyways, Jim, just curious, are there services at the township need to beef up to make this jail project work for you that you're aware of?
Well, that's one of the, that's an interesting question, Brian. I think, excuse me, Tim. One of the things that Commissioner Hope and I are going to be doing, especially on this Friday, two weeks ago, we had a presentation to us in regards to the positioning on the property. So as far as services and everything like that goes, that's a stay tuned situation. Obviously, we want to do, especially I'm a taxpayer in union township, and I'm also, I think we work very well together. I think that county and the township should not have any issues or be at odds in any way, shape, and or form. So as far as all that goes, stay tuned. I will keep you informed. But that has certainly questions that have to be answered as far as utilities goes, water, obviously sewer, things like that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you guys for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right, we're still in a public comment. Again, if, if you'd like to speak, raise your hand through Zoom by using the raise hand button on the list of participants. And we'll give it just a minute. Because I see at least two other participants here. Seeing no other desire to address the board and board public comment, we'll close public comment at 7:32 and move on to report boards and comments. Let's see. Current list of boards and commissioners, commissions, we have nothing to take care of tonight. Planning Commission's ZBA updates, Mr. Nanny?
Thank you very much. The, just a couple of updates for you. The zoning board appeals did not meet in September, but they, they are planning to meet for their October meeting. We don't have any applications. We'll be meeting to do a training work session to help familiarize the Board of Appeals with the new ordinance and the updated requirements that they have in that ordinance. The Plan Commission did meet in September. They took action to appoint, to make two appointments to the Sidewalk and Pathway Prioritization Committee. One was a new appointment, and the other one was a reappointment of Jeremy McDonald to a new term. And then they, the Plan Commission has been looking at implementation of the master plan. They have been discussing the action plan section of the master plan and looking at priority, developing some priorities for what they'd like to do. In particular, there's been interest in looking at the issue of housing in the community and some interest in perhaps having, inviting a group in or some different individuals to come in and make presentations to the Plan Commission to help them understand better the, the issues with housing and housing development in this area. So that, that is the extent of the Plan Commission and ZBA activities. I'm happy to answer any questions that may have.
Any questions for Mr. Nanny? Not seen any. Thank you very much. Board member reports. This time we'll start with Trustee Worley.
All right. Tonight, we need to talk about the 2% grant application. They're due on, at the end of this month. And first of all, I want to take responsibility for the fact that I had had in mind October 31st as to when the applications were due. So I was planning on using tonight's meeting to introduce the ideas about what we should be presenting to the tribe for the 2%. Since last meeting, I found out that it was actually at the end of this month that the applications were due. So I want to apologize and just say it's my bad. And I usually don't mess up on those things, but I had a different date in mind. But that being the case, I did speak with Mark, you know, about getting the application in, and I don't think there's going to be any problem, you know, with being able to go ahead with the, with the 2%. So first of all, this is going to be the last time that I will be serving as the liaison to the tribe. And I would hope to see another successful outcome for our mutual projects with the tribe. So I'd really like to see this go be very positive, this, this next application process for the fall. And I also want to say that our relationships with the tribe have probably been for me, one of the most rewarding aspects of my job as a trustee. I really appreciate the relationships I have there and just getting to know more about their culture and their history and the contributions that they make to this community. So I really value their input and what they've done for us. So that being the case, you know, in spring, we had three projects that were passed, you know, with the pathway along the Chippewa River, the Riverwalk, getting some money for the master plan for that. We got the Broadway and Isabella intersection to get money towards the, looking at the engineering costs for that. And then also, we got money for the safety lights and the speed zone along Marion Grier. So it was a really nice contribution the tribe made for us. So on the last timeout, we, we had also had Jamison Park upgrade, was previously submitted with that in the spring. And the feedback I'd gotten is that they felt that that was a very valuable project, that they were really then trying to distribute the money all around. So they gave us for the three projects that they felt were the priority at the time. But one possibility is that we could resubmit the Jamison Park upgrade for that remodeling and for the park. That serves, you know, not only, that serves that, the east side of town, it serves that area around the reservation. So in terms of use and proximity, it certainly would be a valuable resource. The other one would be, and I'm not sure if we can get enough data prior to submitting this, that's something I think we'd have to ask Mark. You know, again, when I've been talking to the tribal members, they've talked about having a pathway or a bridge that would connect O'Connor and McDonald subdivisions. There are tribal members that live in both those subdivisions, and they thought that'd be like a nice connector for their There are tribal members that live in both those subdivisions and they thought that'd be like a nice connector for, to get those two subdivisions to have the better access to one another. So another potential project. We talked about Meridian Road and in the past, we did submit this Meridian Road to be repaved from M20 to the second bridge. And we submitted that, I think, like three years ago. And that did not receive approval. The feedback I got again was that in terms of use and proximity, you know, again, it, it wasn't viable. But the feedback I've gotten is that they like collaborative projects. So the Meridian Road project being a boundary, a boundary road would, would allow us to maybe hone up with Deerfield Township. And, but the tribe would also like to see the Isabella County Road Commission involved in this as well in terms of the 2%. So it'd be another possibility. And I think Mark had one that he wanted to mention as well. Throw in you want Mark or you want to? Want me to continue?
Budget. Step in for a second. The, the administration has two projects that we would like to submit applications for. One has been mentioned is the resubmital of the application we sent in the spring for the Jamison Park improvements. That application, we would just simply resubmit it. That is in the approximate amount of $200,000. And then the other one that we would like to submit is, you may recall, we've been trying to, to address pump station number one, the upgrades that we've been needing to make there and the bids keep coming in higher than, than we can afford on our own. So we would like to approach the tribe through their 2% grant program to help fund that. Another funding partner that we do have on the books for that is the EDA. And so we would like to submit that one as well. And then, and I'm not sure Norm, if this is the one you just referenced, but we had received, I had received a call from Walt Nelson, Deerfield Township clerk about a joint application with Deerfield Union Township. At the time, the road commission and then submitting it to the tribe for their contribution to repave Meridian Road. And I forget what the beginning and endpoints were. And so Walt then was going to reach out to the road commission to get an estimate of the cost of that one. That estimate has come back. It's $204,000. And the road commission has indicated that they are not willing to help fund that. So if there was a application made, it would just be Deerfield and Union Township. I am simply communicating that to you. I'm not placing a positive or negative recommendation regarding that project. I'm just informing you of that one. So thank you, Trustee Worley.
And also Mark, you're welcome. Also, just to follow up on the pump station. Mark, I think you mentioned that the, that pump station also serves the tribe water park as well. And that's why I think it would be a nice tie-in for the tribe, you know, for them to consider the 2%. So you have four, four projects there. And like I said, I wish I would have done this sooner. I had a different date in mind, but we still, we still can get this in by the 30th. And, you know, Mark said that was fine. And I will still be available to, you know, work with the, you know, working with the tribe and the tribal council in terms of, you know, submitting this and seeing, you know, what we might get. Get approved, you know, for the next cycle. And that will probably be sometime in November. And I suspect I'll still be on the board at that point as well. So.
Norm, I may have missed one. I, I believe you said four.
Yes. So it's Jamison Park upgrade, the pathway and bridge connecting O'Connor and O'Connor and McDonald subdivisions. Road and then the pump station. So those are the four that for the board to consider and, you know, and, and you can really, if you want, if you want, you can do all four. And as the city just recently put out what they were submitting for their 2%, for their 2% this time round. It, it comes of $1.2 million, I believe it is. They have multiple projects in there, all of which they rate it as high priority. So, you know, you can, you can submit as much as you want. The tribe will make the determination in terms of the distribution of the funds, how it gets amped out. And also what they feel would be the viable projects to support. So you could also do all of these for accommodation, whatever the board feels is, is, is in the, you know, in your choosing right now.
And if I may, Chair and Norm, regarding the pathway and bridge project, we're not in a position yet to submit an application on that. We have not done any engineering or research on, on that. So we, we would not be able to submit one in this, in the fall. We could possibly do it in the spring, but we're just not in a position. We don't have the data, the information.
I think the other three would certainly take priority anyway over that one. But I think the, the pathway bridge might be something for the new board to consider moving forward to the spring. So I think, you know, from my perspective, I think submitting Jamison Park, Meridian Road and Pump Station one all makes sense. And, and see which of those the tribe would, and maybe all of them, prepare as a priority. So how did the rest of you guys feel at that point?
Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, Mark was saying something about, you know, that connector bridge that you were talking about, Norm, O'Connor to McDonald. Mark, isn't there something that's going to go on with that drain? I thought I read something where they're going to do something with that drain.
I don't know the exact that they are doing work on that drain. I'm not exactly where the beginning and ends go, but I would, it, it would be a fair guess that in that areas where hopefully they're working on the drain because that's where the problem.
Debris out of it and everything.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions for Norm? I will make a comment regarding that pathway. You know, I think it really meets some of our ends regarding making a healthier community, right? And encouraging pedestrian traffic to and fro, which that would allow, much like the pathway we looked at over Jen Crist, that area, that piece of property that we bought. Providing that linkage is between neighborhoods is a positive thing. So, Tim, I just saw your hand.
Yeah, I shot that up. Thanks, Norm, for all the work you put in on the work with the, our neighbors, the tribal nation. All of your suggestions, I think, and I could support that. When we do get in a position for the O'Connor to Lincoln Court Road, that distance is so close. When I was out there traveling the other day, someone mowing their lawn in Bamber Park or off of Bamber Road, sounded like they were, you know, just across the yard from Lincoln Court. So getting that connectivity would be a really neat thing. Also on my travels, I, I think we should continue to work on sidewalk connectivity in the Broadway Street area near the Isabella Road crossings. And I imagine that's going to be continued to be worked on as we continue improvements on Isabella Road. But thank you for keeping us abreast on that, Norm, and great suggestions.
Yeah, thanks, Norm. You'll be missed as our liaison, I'm sure. I'm glad that's something you've enjoyed.
Thank you.
Bill, would you have any report today?
I don't have anything to report. There's a road commission meeting tomorrow that I'm going to go to. So there was one thing with the road commission over on like First Street, second, or on second, I'm, I'm sorry, on Third Street and Elizabeth Street. I showed Mark some pictures, but we don't have a streets department. That's the, there, I had a complaint. The, the drains are all plugged over there. So I went over there and took pictures and I sent them to Mark. But then Mark forwarded them on to the county and Jim Paul called me about it from the county. The drains right there get plugged because they're all filled with leaves and debris and everything. So they want to get those cleaned out. So I know Mark forwarded it on to the county because Jim Paul called me and asked me about it. So I showed Jim Paul the pictures too. But the people are worried that if something doesn't get done, like last winter, we had a rain and then it froze. And then there was a big ice pond right there in the road, big patch of ice on the intersection of K and Third Street. So there were some residents right there. The one guy said that cars were sliding in his yard. So it sounds like the road commission is going to get there and get cleaned up.
Good to hear. Trustee Lannan?
Yeah, great comment, Bill. I've noticed on other storm drain areas and city streets and other areas that depending on your trees, one good rainstorm with leaves and the seedlings that come down out of trees can plug up a, just that grate area overnight. But it's good to keep on top of that. I always thought it was fun as a kid to take a stick and push down that stuff through the grate and keep it cleaned up and watch the water flow out.
K Street really needs it though. K Street's pretty bad. Like I said, I took, I walked up and down the street and I sent Mark maybe, I don't know, four, four or six pictures. And the drains are plugged. They need to be cleaned out. So there's a road commission meeting tomorrow morning. I'll ask him about it.
And fall is coming. Trustee Lannan, do you have a report today?
Just that actually fall is here. We're probably three months from Christmas. And nothing for a report. Maybe I should be doing some Zoom meetings like some of you other members are doing, but I just have not done that. But I'll save any comments for final board reports.
Very good. Consent agenda. We did move the minutes out. Who had warrants?
I did have warrants and in the spirit of distancing during this pandemic, I choose to review those through our board minute packets. Didn't find anything that seemed out of the ordinary, although of course I did not go into the office to review and make sure everything was signed, but things seemed appropriate.
With that, do we have a motion for consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Support?
For it.
Any further discussion on consent agenda approval?
It looks good. Other than Norm earlier than this point took something off the consent agenda, I believe.
Correct. Minutes have been moved. Our first business item. So without the minutes being part of the consent agenda, any further discussion? Seeing none. I guess I'll do roll call. I feel a little weird doing Lisa's job too.
We know, Brian.
Trustee Hulk on the motion?
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Yes.
Trustee Lannan?
Yes.
Trustee Milky, yes. Consent agenda is approved with the exception of minutes, which is our first item of business and new business. Norm, I'll give you the floor on this since you asked to move this out.
Sure. In our last meeting, there was obviously some concern and confusion regarding the wording of the motion that was presented at the time. This had to do in terms of, you know, Mark continuing on and or not, and not receiving an increase is the motion. And there was concern about the manner in which it was worded. And I think there was also been confusion in terms of how to vote for it. And the confusion basically had to do with the way the motion was presented. You, you basically had a double bind and then a forced choice in terms of what to make. Because had you, you know, to vote no, what is really going against Mark's, you know, the manager's employment contract. So there's a lot of confusion over that. So no need to beat a dead horse over that. But I, I think that we have to find a way to maybe find a better way of handling that. Both in terms of if a motion is being presented, if the board is having a difficult time assimilating and deciding how to vote on it, then we have to reconsider how to modify or amend that motion to make it more palatable for everyone. Secondly, is that I do believe that an abstention can be a standalone vote. Other jurisdictions, jurisdictions, you'll see yays, nays and abstains. And I know there was an email that was sent to us regarding that an abstention goes as a no vote. But I don't believe that that's necessarily legislative law. Let me just read what the email stated. Basically, the basis presented for recording a no vote for an, an abstention was that the open meetings, what came from the Open Meetings Act handbook by Attorney General, General Dana Russell, which states abstain means to refuse to vote. Thus, a board member does not pro-vote to abstain. If a vote requires a majority or a certain percentage of the members for approval, an abstention has the same effect as a no vote. Now, that's one part of it that I think why, and that in this case, right, abstaining should have gone as a, as an independent vote, not become a no vote. If a vote requires a majority or a certain percentage of members for approval, an abstention has the same effect as a no, well, there were five yeses and one no prior to the abstention. So the abstaining would have had no effect on the outcome of the vote. Secondly, I believe that the Open Meetings Act handbook is more providing an opinion, maybe a recommendation if you will, but it's not necessarily legislative law. Therefore, I think that we should consider that if someone does abstain, I mean, it shouldn't happen frequently. Preferably it happens not at all, but there might be times in which the situation to vote on something, like I said, becomes a forced choice or a double bind. At that point, I think it's important that a person be able to have that opportunity then. So I, I think that maybe what we might want to do is follow this up with maybe the MTA and get a definitive ruling so we know for sure. Because seeing my vote being put into the no category is not the way that I was voting. I was voting to abstain because I couldn't vote either way, because both, both situations, I would have voted a yes and a no. So it was the way it was worded that forced in a sense of abstention. So maybe we should get the, get an opinion from So maybe we should get the, uh, get an opinion from the MTA just so we know in the future. One, how we could make sure we can modify the motion so it's more palatable if it's causing confusion for the board. And second, that if a person does make the, um, make a decision to abstain, that that is recorded as that in the minutes. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out for board consideration. I'm done.
All right. We still need to, uh, either approve or correct the minutes for the record.
So my motion would be that the abstention, the post, be in the minutes be listed as an abstain. And if it's proven that that's not the case, it's modified later. And I think at this point, the abstention should be five yeses, one no, and one abstain, rather than having my vote put in the no category. And then in parentheses, abstain, because it's still casted as a no. And again, a no on that vote basically was a violation of the manager's employment contract, which is by no means either the other no vote or myself wanting that to be the case. It was again, the wording which got us sort of stuck.
So forgive me, but, um, what's the exact change you're suggesting?
I'm making a motion that, um, that my vote, in this case, the abstention, be recorded as an abstain vote and taken out of the no category.
So, so like nays, Lannan, comma, abstentions, Worley?
Nays, period, then Worley abstained, right?
It would be yays, would be Gunny, Rice, Cody, Houck and Milky, nays, Lannan, and then abstain, Worley. Should be the way it should be worded.
Is that your motion is to accept the minutes with that change?
Correct.
Is there support for that motion?
I'll support it.
Uh, Tim?
To me, it looks like, and, go ahead.
I just saw Tim's hand, Bill.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Tim? You're muted.
I'm muted. You're muted, Tim.
You're muted.
There.
Bill, you certainly could have jumped in there. Not a problem there, but, uh, you know, whenever we have questions and, uh, we can potentially see a future question about the same sort of, um, situation. Great idea to contact MTA, get their opinion if they're willing to give some input on that. But however it lands, continuous improvement is important.
Great. Bill?
Well, I was just going to say the way it's worded there now, it looks like, it looks like it says nays. And then it looks like, to me, I read word Lannan and Worley abstained. I, I still think like Norm was right. I think they should have said like nays, maybe a period and then abstained Worley. I agree with that.
Yeah, that's how I'm making the motion.
Yeah.
No, I can support that too. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll start with you. The motion is to accept the minute, minutes under record with the change uh, per the motion to put a period essentially after nays and then say abstentions Worley. Uh, trust, is that clear? That's what we all, trustee Lannan?
Support.
Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Trustee Worley?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Milky, yes. Uh, motion passes. And so we're on to item B, which was A on the printed agenda. Um, and with this, I'm assuming Mark, you'd like to give an introduction?
Sure, thank you. This item is to conduct a second reading and then consider for adoption an ordinance to correct the error in section five of ordinance number 1991 dash four entitled ordinance approving amendments to downtown and tax increment financing plan of the Union Township West Downtown Development Authority. This paperwork's on page fourteen of your agenda. In essence, the ordinance incorrectly refers to the date of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty as the expiration date of the West DDA, while the plan itself has a date of twelve thirty-one twenty-one. The board conducted a first reading on this item and introduced it at your last meeting. You approved that first reading and introduction that caused the staff to uh, take appropriate action for publishing and notification. It went in the Morning Sun on September thirteenth. And it was posted on our website and on the, on the, in the building on September tenth. Adoption of this ordinance is necessary to ensure that the West DDA can continue to collect, collect tax increment revenues, uh, in twenty twenty-one. Happy to answer any questions you may have. And then also Mr. Nanny is here as well if you have any. Thank you.
Any hands looking for blue hands? Mr. Nanny, do you have anything you feel like you need to add at this point?
Uh, no, I don't have anything further at this time. Thank you.
Been not a lot of discussion. Um, if you can hear me. Would anybody like to entertain a motion?
Yes. Blue hands, blue hands.
Oh, sorry, Tim. I missed it. Trustee Lannan?
I'd make a motion to conduct a second reading for and to adopt an mandatory ordinance to correct the Scrivener's error in section five ordinance number nineteen ninety-one dash four entitled ordinance approving amendments to development and tax increment finance plan of the Union Township West Downtown Development Authority.
Word? Do I need a blue hand?
Nope, not for support. You're good. Any discussion though? Any further discussion?
Now, we talked about this quite briefly last time.
Discussion that was, um, indicated at our prior board meeting. The situation that took place, there's a, basically a typo of, uh, a date that, um, was, uh, recorded and scribed by the person, uh, doing the minutes that shortened that time duration by one year and just a correction is being made.
We're looking to see if there's any other discussion. Be to not seeing any. The motion on the floor.
Blue hand.
Actually printed in your packet, I believe you, sorry, Norm?
Blue hand.
Yes, trustee Worley?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment Rodney. Um, I think you've done a really great job in really cleaning up on our ordinances. I mean, you're going through everything so thoroughly. You're presenting new things that we need to be, um, um, putting into our ordinance packet. And I think it's really making the township moving ahead into the future in a very professional, a very fair and a very ethical manner. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I'll just add that I agree with Norm on that. Thank you, Mr. Nanny.
You're welcome. You're welcome very much.
All right, we don't see no further hands for discussion. We have motion to conduct the second reading for and to adopt a mandatory ordinance to correct, correct the Tribner's error in section five of ordinance number nineteen ninety-one dash four entitled ordinance approving amendments to development and tax increment finance plan of the Union Township West Development Downtown Development Authority. I'll call on trustee Worley.
Yes.
Trustee Lannan?
Yes.
Trustee Milky, yes. Trustee Houck?
Yes.
Uh, motion approved unanimously. And we'll move on to our third order of new business, uh, policy governance two point one. Uh, is this something that you want to do, any kind of presentation on, Mark?
Uh, yes, thank you. Just for a moment, the, uh, item is paperwork for this items on page seventeen of your agenda pack. And this is the opportunity for the board to an annually review the manager's compliance with policy two point ten. The title of that policy is communications and support to the board. It, it, uh, at a high level, the policy states that the township manager shall not permit the board to be uninformed or unsupported in its work. Further, without limiting the scope of the foregoing, the manager shall not, and then there are ten items that I'm not going to read out loud. They're all in your packet. Ten items that the manager should not be engaging in. And so I interpret this policy to indicate that the, that the board of trustees in its entirety, not individually, shall be made aware of any material information that would impact the policymaking role of the board, that the manager should gather all relevant information and present to the board in a concise manner. So to assist the board in its policymaking capacity, that the manager shall prepare and report timely monitoring reports according to the approved schedule. And that the manager should also advise the board if in the manager's opinion, the board is not in compliance with its own governance process. There is some data that is part of your report that I feel demonstrates, uh, at least in my judgment, that the administration and the township manager by extension, or actually the other way around, is in compliance with policy two point ten. Monitoring reports are routinely presented per the schedule in the governance policy document. Manager submits, uh, monthly activity report to keep the board timely informed of operational activities, upcoming agenda items and other information of interest. You know, the township manager and I recognize that there's always improvement opportunities here. But whether by email or personal conversations, I've attempted to ensure that the members of the board have kept up to date on um, issues that are potentially high profile matters, um, positive or negative. You know, the board did receive routine updates regarding the COVID response related matters, whether, you know, having to do with operational changes or community issues. The board received several communications, whether it be an email or closed session regarding various legal matters over the course of the year. Board was informed when there's oil, water advisories issued. When the, when there was a tier three uh, water monitoring violation, the board was informed of that violation. The board was informed of the Oak Meadow, um, water main break that we had a hand in causing. Board was informed, uh, routinely of the PFAS testing issue and, and those results. I didn't list all the data there, but, uh, so in my judgment, I think, uh, we are in compliance. I hope to get some feedback in the board from the board of purposes, monitoring, review. So that I'll turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, trustee Lannan?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Chairman Brian. I believe we're in compliance as well. I, uh, kind of highlight, um, two point ten point three. I give our township management, uh, strong, uh, kudos in the sense that, uh, communications provided to us are, seem to always be given in regards to the township board team making policy and, uh, continuing to look at a higher level of driving our township forward. I, I appreciate the maturity, the thick skinniness of our manager not to cave in on, uh, opinions and emotions that maybe come forth out of the board that really do not, um, meet the sense of a full board policy decision-making, uh, comment on this particular communications in support of the board. You know, you can get, uh, again, as we speak, down in the weeds of small things, but, uh, we are certainly always abreast and apprised by the township manager of things that impact the board level decision-making of policy.
Thank you, Tim. Trustee Worley?
Yeah, I have a few, uh, comments. Uh, so first of all, I feel we are in complete compliance with this. I think, uh, in terms of Mark, I think Mark can keep us fully informed. And that what I really appreciate is that you're always seen, you're always available to assist us with any type of individual questions or guidance that's requested. And I, I know I value that a whole lot because it's made me a better trustee in the process. Um, I feel the communication is always transparent. Um, it's always honest and it's always highly ethical. And that for me means a whole lot. I don't really see that in government nowadays. Um, I really appreciate, um, how you will give, when we, when you're giving us some ideas, you oftentimes give us various options and you, the projected outcomes to assist us with this uh, our, um, our board decision-making. So it's not like, you know, pushing something through. You, you give us some, some, some things to look at and, and reasons why. And then we can make our due diligence and make the decisions. And I think that you really help, uh, the board when we hear off course on how to go back to, uh, the procedures and po, and, and process. You, you keep us on track when we really kind of wander. So I really appreciate that aspect too.
Yeah, any other comments? I'll just, uh, add, I agree with, uh, everything I heard from trustee Lannan and trustee Worley. I'll also add, um, Mark, that, you know, I know it's not just you, but the packets that we do get, by the way, I didn't, I didn't get mine yet. Um, but the packets we do get.
It's in the mail.
Yeah, I know, but you can tell the mail is slower now. Um, but the packets that we do get, uh, the organization and the completeness of them, um, i- it's pretty dramatic from when I was on the board previously. And not that the packets weren't helpful then, but I think this is a, a step up and, and the material that's there usually will, is I have questions. If I look deeper, I find the answer to it. And so I'm commending you on, on the organization of the packets. And I know staff helps with that, um, and the information that's provided.
Thank you for those comments, that feedback, uh, to the chair. One of the first things I did when I got here was create this request for board action memo that I think, uh, has been real useful to the board as they've deliberate their various, uh, issues. And, and you're right, uh, you know, I had to, the, the staff could, you know, you know, writes those often, had to bring them online to get to use that, and they were very accepting of that. And then the compilation of the agenda packet, I don't know how she does it, but that's Jennifer, and so she works magic, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, Jennifer, without calling out your name, I was speaking to you, too. All right. Bill, do you have anything at all?
No, but I do agree with you. I just got my packet in the mail today. And I know it's postmarked the eighteenth. That was last Friday, so it's weird.
Yeah, very much. All right, moving on to item D, which in the printed agenda is actually C, which should be discussion-action regarding policy governance 4.0, global governance management connection.
Yes, and paperwork on this item, and starting on page twenty. This is where the board can review policies that are applicable to the board itself. And I will go ahead and just read this. It's not long.
This is page twenty-two.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The board's primary connection to the operational organization, its achievements and conduct will be through the chief executive officer, titled Township Manager. However, because of the nature of township government and its election department heads and titles, township supervisor, township clerk, and township treasurer, policies of the board shall reflect the term Township Management Team, intending the inclusion of the Township Manager, Supervisor, and Treasurer, within the scope of their respective duties as defined by law. In the event that there is no designated Township Manager, the Township Supervisors consider chief executive officer for the development of the township budget, or this can compile now. Well, this is for your own just internal discussion.
Any comments? Trustee Lannan?
Yeah, in review of this policy here of the board governance, I really could simply say, yes, I felt we were in compliance. But I'll comment a little bit more of this on final board comments.
Fair enough. Any other comments?
I feel we're in compliance.
Well, I'll say that, you know, I obviously, as a board member, interact with our various head, department heads that are elected officials often enough. And it always seems to me that the feedback that I'm getting in their relationship with Mark as a an employee of Mark's also, of the managers, that that's a difficult boundary to remember, right? We're Mark, we're the manager's boss, and at the same time, there are three of us that are employees of the township and therefore are employees of our manager. And the interactions that I've heard, that relationship works pretty darn well. So I would say we're in compliance as well. So if nothing else, we'll move on through our agenda to item E, discussion-action of governance policy number 4.1, unity of control.
Same thing here. This is where the board can discuss compliance with its own policy. The policy 4.1, unity of control, states that only officially passed motions of the board are binding on the township manager. Decisions or instructions of individual board members, officers, or committees are not binding on the township manager, except in rare instances when the board has specifically authorized such exercise of authority. In the case of board members or committees requesting information or assistance without board authorization, township manager can refuse such requests that require, in the township manager's opinion, a material amount of staff time or funds or is disruptive. And I will say that I've never encountered that type of situation where maybe it has come up, has been at board meetings, and I have sought clarification or let the board know that, you know, what what might be entailed per such a request from an individual, and then it either became a board-agreed-upon request or not, and then I acted appropriately. Thank you.
Trustee Lannan?
Thanks for your comments here, Mark. I think this is such an important board policy here, and it is terrific to hear that our township manager doesn't feel that it has become problematic. But I can imagine the potential that this could be very problematic as individual board members might feel they have latitudes beyond their appropriate demeanor as a board member, and I think it's so important to watch that this is being followed. Thank you.
Trustee Worley?
Well, this one really hits home for me as well. As a psychologist in regard to patient responses, patient relationship, it's always imperative to be very clear about limits and boundaries in terms of your roles and responsibilities. And I see how that is evident even in Mark's position, whether that's with staff, board, et cetera. And I think that the reason it works well is because you yourself, Mark, are clear about those limits and boundaries in terms of roles and responsibilities. And I think that that's something that has made it better for everyone that's engaging with you.
Yeah, I would agree. That's an interesting way to look at it, Norm. I hadn't thought of that, but I think, Mark, you do play an important role in helping corral when there are individual board member agendas that really need to be a board whole agenda or not. And it's the board that should act. And, you know, as a board member, we always have to remember that we have no power except together. But I think what I've seen, we're in full compliance to this. Anything else to add from anybody? All right. We have extended public comment. Sorry, trustee Lannan?
I'll find my blue hand there for a second.
I looked a minute ago. I didn't see it.
Just that. Well, it might have been just a second ago. Not quite a minute. Anyway. I think it is so important that we keep truly focused on we are a board as a whole. We are not individuals. And if we have individual thought, that's terrific, which is so important, and diversity of thought is what makes change. An important change. But it is needed to be collaborative from a group to make change as one voice, as a board. So that is so important for us, our board, to understand. Thank you.
Agreed. All right, moving into extended public comment. This is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to speak, please state your name and address for the record. And I'll be looking for the blue hands. And if you're not familiar with Zoom yet, at the bottom of your screen, if you move your mouse, there's a participants icon which can be used to display participants. If you do that, you can choose to raise your hand, which is at the bottom of the participants panel. So looking for those blue hands. And we'll give it just a minute.
So, Brian, is that on the bottom ribbon, and you got to click on it to bring that up?
Yes, click participants if you don't have participants up.
For our people.
And see none. I see those that are in the meeting are fairly regular and probably know how to do this, so we'll move on to the manager comments. And extended public comment is closed at 8:30.
Thank you. And I do just have a couple. As was indicated earlier, the planning commission did fill the open positions on the sidewalk committee. I do want to note that they brought in Mr. Matt Mertz, his new appointment. So I'm excited about him joining the group and then the reappointment of Mr. McDonald, who you all know. I do not yet, I have not yet met Mr. Mertz, maybe some of you do, but it's always good to get new new names, at least for some of us on some of these boards. We did issue, I mentioned at the last meeting, I think, that we'd issued a municipal violation notice under the municipal violation ordinance. We issued a second one not too long ago, and actually, somebody paid it and took care of the business, the reason they were, they received the violation notice. So that we are activating and have activated that bureau. I mentioned that we've done a review of that ordinance. That'll be in front of you at your October 28th meeting. Cleanup Day is October 10th. We have several volunteers, which I appreciate. We'll be joining the group, Don Long, who is on Sustainability Committee, Mike Lyon, Mr. Art Delorenzo, myself, trustee Houck is going to be out there. Mr. James Thering is going to be out there. And then we also have three, actually four workers from MMI that are going to be helping us. They helped us last year as well. The I guess that is it. Thank you.
Trustee Lannan, you have a question for our manager?
No, I was just going to make a comment that manager stool dryer mentioned Matt Matt. As I go through our township on various modes of transportation and think about Isabella Road and the disc connectivity of pathways and sidewalks down that very, very busy road, but an important area to get from north to south on, as well as the Broadway Street area that I commented earlier on. And it looks like you both froze up, so I'm not sure you can hear me. But Matt often comes to mind when I think about accessibility and travelability of our pathways.
Yeah, I think Matt will bring a lot to that committee. Incidentally, Mark, Matt Mertz was the only constable this township ever has had.
Is that right?
Yeah. I learned that this last year.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mark. Final board comments. I'll start lower left here and go clockwise. Trustee Houck?
I just wanted to let people know that there's only a couple days left to get your census forms filled out and get those turned in. It's very important. And then as far as the cleanup day goes, that everybody realizes it's only for Union Township residents. Thank you.
Trustee Worley?
Yeah, I just wanted to preface that in speaking about the minutes tonight and making the change, that it was in no way was that a criticism of anyone or in terms of, we had talked about everything last week, so there's no way presented as a criticism. I think that what we see as a board is that we're constantly work in progress. And we never reach perfection, you know, we have to keep on striving for a higher ideal. And I think that Lannan said, trustee Lannan said it well, that there's constantly, there's continued room for improvement in what we do. So bringing that up tonight, and I felt that the last time we got kind of locked up on that, on that motion and on the voting, and I think that as we open that up and we begin to look at other ways to do things, it makes us better as a board. So again, I just want to, it wasn't a criticism. It was in reference to how do we move forward and do things differently and doing better, you know?
Good. Thank you. Trustee Lannan?
Yeah, I got a few.
I just said, I know you got something.
A few notes down. Am I coming through? Okay.
Yeah. You started things a little bit down.
All right, it's not me, it's the high-tech world we're in. Anyways, policy governance, I think it is so important for any township board member. And I would highly suggest, recommend, mandate, whatever. I'm not sure if we can mandate, but we truly make an effort to attend policy governance workshop trainings that are available to us. So however that could be worded, mandated, whatever, it's how we operate. If a new slate of board members come in, which is possible, then I think it's so important that they attend that. Also want to make a shout out to treasurer Kim Rice, that wishing her and her new baby are doing well. And so happy for her and her family. Also, wasn't quite sure on the cost of service meeting that we had the other day, where we're going to move to move forward on that, if we're going to have continued conversation, which I'm sure we are, but if we're hoping to have a decision made before this board exits. Also wanted to mention that the world is changing. Message from California Governor Newsom had an executive order to end new gas-powered car sales by 2035. So just information that we can think about being the Motor City capital of the world, how that may affect things. Jamison Park upgrade have been up by there, and the upgrades have been significant and make that park a more usable spot. And again, mentioned that, as I said previous, that Matt Mertz is often on my mind as I travel the community and consider pathways and dangerous situations depending on location, how someone may have to commute down a busy road and have no other option than to stay on the road as opposed to get onto a than to stay on the road as opposed to get onto a nice pathway or sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. I won't say much other than thanks for putting up with me in my first meeting that I had to run, and I was not prepared to do that. So I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate your patience with me. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before you do, there's one other thing. I just want to let the Board know I did sign the AP checks in Treasurer Rice's absence. And also, I wanted to point out the location of the Cleanup Day has changed from the traditional site to Commission on Aging, and I failed to mention that earlier. So, thank you.
I did get the notification in the mail, too, so hopefully our residents see that. All right, with that, entertain a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make the motion, George.
Do we have support? Trustee Worley, always a trouble child. And with that, I'll take a, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Seeing no opposition, motion passes. Y'all have a great evening.
Good job. Good job tonight, Brian.
Thanks. We, I thought Norm was gonna do it, but
You're better.
Have a good night.